Meeting held on July 2nd, 2014.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor O'Toole, anything you'd like to highlight from that meeting?
Yeah, I've got a couple of items here that, uh, one we're dealing with today, uh, or on the, in August, or ju- yeah, in August, the landscaping requirement. We had, uh, discussion and, uh, proposed landscaping requirement changes on that meeting. Also, we had a variance request from a Mr. Tom Goodchild, the owner of the Sawmill Restaurants. He presented to the committee a request for an LED sign. Uh, it was approved with conditions. Uh, also, we had another concern. A individual wrote in requesting, uh, the city look into something, uh, regarding the wooden pellets that business owners are giving to patrons, and those are used in bushfires and miscellaneous other places outside the city. And the resulting nails and screws that are used are leaving a little bit of damage. So, city is looking into the administration to find some recycling, uh, proposals that we could be using there. And, uh, yeah, and that would be it.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Uh, we'll move on then to nine point three in the Community Living Committee. And, Councilor Clayton, can you handle that set of minutes for us? Sorry to spring that on you, but I see that, uh, Council Radburn wasn't-
I have a plan though.
You had a plan, okay. You got it covered. Okay. Councilor Clayton, go ahead.
No, Mr. Council Radburn's gonna leave the way.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So, Councilor, sorry, Councilor Clayton, we need you to microphone on.
There we go. Thank you.
And, uh, we'll start off with a motion to receive the minutes from that meeting.
Sure.
In a second.
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, council receive the minutes for the Community Living Committee from July 2nd.
Thanks very much. Councilor Clayton, any discussion or debate on that motion? Does it look like it reflects the meeting? Looks like it must, so I'll call for the vote. Okay, and council's adopted those minutes, and now we'll get into the business. Business arising, Councilor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. We had a full agenda that day. Uh, discussions of park tree planting as well as inventory of our, uh, our parks and our trees, uh, and, and some, uh, funding allocations for park improvements, as well as, uh, integrated pest management plan was discussed. There are a couple motions that came out of the meeting from that day.
Should we start with, uh, nine point three point one?
You betcha. Uh, I would like to move the council, um, support in the amount of $15,000 to the Special Olympics Alberta Winter Games, uh, and the funds in the two- come from the 2015 operating budget.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Clayton. Uh, discussion or debate on the motion? Councilor Rice?
I will support the motion, but reluctantly. I, I always, I understand they need the money so they can begin planning now, but I hate, uh, cutting options off for council in their budget discussions that we'll be doing in the fall by making decisions prior to looking at it as a whole.
Thanks, Councilor Rice. Councilor McLean?
Mayor Given, um, I'm very excited about this. Um, I just want to know how many people were expecting to participate in this event?
Yeah, if I recall, there's almost 3,000, uh, participants in this event.
That would be between athletes-
Athletes and visitors and, and chaperones and coaches.
Coaches and officials.
Yep, you bet.
Uh, any other discussion or debate? Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a suggestion, I would certainly be supporting the motion as well. One, uh, as we move forward, maybe, uh, a concept to, uh, to pursue is, uh, access to the Arctic Winter Games legacy. That's a possibility. Uh, we probably need to have it in the operating budget, but, uh, when the time comes, we might be able to entertain that request at pursuit of excellence through the Arctic Winter Games legacy.
Okay, any further discussion or debate? Councilman?
Councilor Radburn has a good idea there. Um, it's only a total of 12,000 a year though, so it wouldn't make the 15,000, and it's, and it was allocated this year to the Francophone Games, so until next year.
Okay. Any, uh, further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Clayton, uh, nine point three point two?
Sure, give me one sec here, I just lost it again. Um... All right. I'm back for too much. All right, there we go. Uh... Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd like to move that council-approved allocation of the 2014 Parks Improvement Grant Funding as presented.
Thanks, Councilor Clayton. Uh, any discussion or debate on that motion? See anybody in the queues? Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just for, uh, those viewers and others, just, uh, to highlight, uh, who is receiving money, Grand Prairie Cricket Association 5,000, Mission Heights Neighborhood Association 3,500, Friends of a Cool Parkside School Society 1,500, Copperwood Neighborhood Association 5,000, and Mountview Neighborhood Association 10,000. Again, uh, I think this, these allocations kind of prove the worth of our, uh, neighborhood association development and, uh, community organizations that are doing good things to improve their, their communities. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Radburn. Uh, any further discussion or debate? See anybody in the queue, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Clayton, we've got, uh, nine point three point three.
I betcha. I'd like to move the council adopt the Integrated Pest Management Plan and, and recommendations within the plan be brought forward to the 2015 to 2018 Business Planning and Budget Process.
Thanks, Councilor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion is carried. Uh, Councilor Clayton, I think that was all the business from that meeting. Thanks for stepping in and pinch hitting for Counselor Tarrant, who was pinch hitting for Counselor Radburn, so we're, we're down. Thanks very much, uh, for that. And we'll move on to nine point four, the Community Safety Committee from July 8th. Uh, Councilor McLean, I believe that was your meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the council receive the minutes of the Community Safety Committee held July 2- 8th, 2014.
Thanks very much. Councilor McLean, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And Councilor McLean, I believe we had a couple items business resulting?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the council adopt the 132nd Avenue Functional Study and a supplementary report to the 132nd Avenue Functional Study.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Uh, open for discussion or debate. This is the item, obviously, that a number of our delegations presented on, and, uh, there were other presentations that were at, uh, the committee level and, uh, through the process. So, we'll open for discussion or debate. I was just, that was all preamble to let the queue fill up here as it happens. Uh, Councilor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I was not hoping to be first on the draw, but that's okay. Um, a couple of things. I won't be supporting this motion. Uh, there is, uh, although I think that the report and the study is leaps and bounds ahead of what the first, um, presentation was, however, um, based on three things, uh, actually four. The left turn access to 99th Street North and South, uh, the right slip lane, lane request, uh, on, um, in front of the Petrican site there, as well as the right in into the Windsor Ford property there, uh, and the sidewalks on the north side to me, um, although I think sidewalks in regards to our mobility plan are essential, especially with residents living to the east along 132nd, but I think sidewalks on the south would be, uh, would be adequate, and we could have a, a, uh, pedestrian crossing at 102nd to get over to Arbor Hills in regards to mobility, and the sidewalks could continue on there in more of a residential area. Uh, so based on those four things, I think that, uh, the current study is, is close, but not where it needs to be for me to support it. So, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Clayton. Councilor Rice?
I'm, I'm having some concerns very similar to Councilor Clayton's. Excuse, excuse me. I, uh, I believe that we need, we, we came close, but we didn't hit the bullseye on this one. And I, uh, while I would like to make a motion and make some amendments tonight, I think the amendments would be large enough, I think it needs to go back to administration to be reworked. Uh, you know, okay, we've been fooling around with this for two and a half years. It seems like, oh my goodness, not another delay. But, uh, I think, uh, certainly there is the, the three things that Councilor Clayton mentioned. I also think the large amount of, of green space and concrete needs to be, again, we act like we have shares in the cement factory. I think it has to be cut down drastically. So, um, and it was certainly pointed out very eloquently tonight, uh, green spaces simply don't work in an industrial area for the reasons that were outlined. So, uh, I won't make a motion to send it back to administration right now, uh, till the rest of council has their opportunity to speak. Uh, but, uh, certainly that's where I'm headed.
Thanks, Councilor Rice. Councilor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. Um, see, I got a couple questions that I, I would just like to ask administration in regards to, uh, the, the areas. There's questions that came up, uh, over the past few months, and again, last night, they, they weren't alleviated. Um, it was brought up by, uh, Dan from the, uh, chamber here, uh, about the proposed speed limit. Uh, when we get our road to the point where, where it's, it's good and we can have that traffic flowing on it, is it expected to be a 50 kilometer an hour or perhaps faster, 70? No, Mr. Cow?
Uh, in this section, the road is anticipated to be 50 kilometers an hour. Outside of this area, we would be looking at a higher speed, given it's an arterial roadway and a secondary highway.
Thank you. I do have a couple more questions as well. Um, now, I'm, I'm just looking at 100th Street there, and I know that we have that access road, and we had a member of the public come in today, Frank, and talking about the high collision percentage that we have there. Um, now, when we do all these changes to the road, um, essentially that makes that road pretty much moot, right? The, the secondary access, do we cut it off at a certain point? Like, I see Windsor Ford's on the, on the corner there, and there's another slip road here, but it seems to end off, and there's a sidewalk that trails right around. Um, would that be, would that make that road moot, so with, with all the changes and the additions of roads and stuff like that?
Mr. Cow?
Um, having a tough time following, not being able to point on a map and see exactly what you're talking about. Is this the southeast corner or the, with the overall intersection, or?
Should be the southeast corner of the intersection, but I'm, I'm talking about the secondary road that's currently being used.
The, the service road would, those, uh, all three service roads would ultimately be closed at, uh, at the, uh, 78,000 or 65,000 population, I believe.
Okay. And, uh, so then that would leave access to the businesses there from the backside on 99th Streets? Yeah, okay. Now, the other thing that, that I, another question that I had is, and I was just looking at it, like currently there's a stop sign on the road near the end of the meridian, kind of right in front of the, the Ketties there. And I just, my personal, my personal thought was, most people are gonna wanna turn left there, but they're gonna be prohibited simply by that meridian. Um, going right, it makes them travel up to 97th, maybe back on 139th, and then back to 100th Street. But there is no real access there. If you turn out, it means that you're gonna have to slide in really quickly to Ketties and pull a quick U-turn, and then come back around on, uh, on that road. Um, is it, so I guess my question is, do you believe that it's necessary to have that meridian there, or at least the size of that meridian there?
Mr. Cow?
Yes, we do. As a matter of fact, uh, the question came up earlier, is how many vehicles could queue up at that intersection until they got to 99th Street? About 12 to 15 vehicles to the first side of 99th Street. So, you're gonna add probably another three or four vehicles. We're talking under 20 vehicles queuing at that intersection when you're running, uh, 28 to 30,000 vehicles a day through there. Uh, at peak times, that's not a lot of queuing if you look at, uh, the current bypass or 108th Street.
Okay, I do have more. Um, now, on both sides of 99th, uh, obviously there's gonna be a lot of truck traffic that's going through there. Um, my concern really is that, uh, it's, we may be able to do 10 to 15 vehicles, but once you start piling up semi-trucks, like, it probably decreases that even more. Um, is it possible, and I know there's a, a lighted intersection, like right on 100th, but as far as a safety issue, have we, has administration ever thought about incorporating, uh, like a lighted system in there in order to give trucks access to turn left or to turn right onto that road?
Yes, we have. And, uh, the, the spacing of these intersections, it's, it's too close together to, for, for it to be effective. It actually would, a second signalized intersection that close would just add to delays and driver frustration on the stretch of road. Uh, in regards to your questionable vehicles on 99th Street turning left, uh, our anticipation is that vehicles were coming out of the businesses on 99th Street in the future, and they wanted to go west or north, that they would actually go south on 99th Street to 128th Ave., which is being recommended to be paved, upgraded, and signaledized. They would be able to go south and over basically same distance, half a block, to get onto 100th.
Okay. Thank you. I still have a couple more. I'm sorry, I wrote down a lot of stuff here. Um, now, uh, on the north side of 132nd Street, and I, we're going up here, I drove all the way up to 92nd Street last night, and was just going over it. And I, it was unclear to me as to what that farmer's field there area is gonna be. Is that, uh, currently zoned for residential, or is that zoned for, uh, industrial?
The northwest corner of the planned area is, uh, is planned for, uh, commercial.
Planned for commercial?
Yes.
So hence why we want to build that, the sidewalk down there and connect, uh, connect everything. Is it possible that commercial industrial go in that space as well, or is it specific?
We have a preliminary, preliminary outline plan from the developer. He's waiting for this study to be adopted, to, to proceed, and he's planning predominantly all commercial in that area. Um, our concerns with the sidewalks relate more to the fact that you have, uh, Crystal Lake and more subdivisions developing to the east, and you have Northridge, Royal Oaks, Arbor Hills, developing on the west side. And it would be more of a connection between the two neighborhoods, as, not so much as direct access to the businesses. And if we run transit on this route, it makes it very difficult for transit to pick up people. They generally pick up on one side of the road when they're traveling one direction, and on the other side, when they're traveling the other direction.
And, uh-
Councilor Thiessen?
I, I guess that, uh, pretty much answers it. So I'm just gonna comment on my, on my next question there, and then I do have just one more, actually, after that. Um, so I, I guess it's in regards to sidewalks, and I'm a big fan of our community mobility plan, and, and I also too, uh, that's why I wanted to know what, what the zoning was on that strip of the road there. Uh, but recently, we just, uh, allowed, like, our industrial roads to develop, like, with, uh, with ditches and, uh, not doing curbing and stuff like that along there, as well as no sidewalks. Uh, so I was wondering if that was, like, I mean, people said, well, I don't believe the green's gonna last there, but if we can utilize the green and cut back the amount of space that we need to purchase, or to take away from the current landowners and the space there, is that a possibility as well?
Mr. Cow?
On the industrial, we actually have had that rural cross-section for quite a few years, but, uh, in this area, the sidewalks are actually pushed back, not, not so much for green space. Those would actually probably, with the width of those areas, they'd be hard surface to allow for some snow storage. It's more for pedestrian safety. When you look at the heavy trucks up here, and the vision of the community mobility is safe connecting routes, it's more for pedestrian safety and comfort, so they're set back from the road. On a pedestrian, there's numerous examples we can show in the winter, where the sidewalks are against the road, and the pedestrians will actually walk on the grass behind the sidewalk because of the truck and traffic volume. So that's more done for a safety aspect of, of the pedestrian safety. It's not to try and take land, it's not necessarily to have green space. Like I say, that could be potentially, a good portion of that would be, uh, potentially hard surface colored concrete or decorative concrete like that, so that we could use it for snow storage.
Uh, I guess, uh, I have another question that popped in my head right after you, uh, mentioned that. I, I, do you think that it would, it would, could be equally as safe, uh, with a wider sidewalk road on the south side of the street, uh, that connects Crystal Lake and all the other residential neighborhoods that go down there, uh, to continue traffic flow without putting it on both sides of the street?
Mr. Cow?
Uh, that's tough to say. That's difficult to say, because typically pedestrians will, uh, get those, uh, they'll make go-crossing, they'll, they'll walk even if there isn't a sidewalk there, because they aren't gonna, people typically if, if, uh, aren't gonna go from one side of the street to the other, and then walk two blocks, and then go back to the other side of the street. So if there's no sidewalk there, they'll wind up walking through parking lots or the boulevard or whatever typically, uh, the desire lines of pedestrians. So, especially with a major intersection like this, the traffic volumes we're seeing, you know, this only shows the sidewalks right along 132nd and a bit to the south, but it would tie into a sidewalk network ultimately when 100th Street is, is upgraded to go north and south. As major, not only as major, major road corridors, but major pedestrian corridors, we also use these arterial roads as major transmission corridors for power, gas, water, trunk sewers. So that's quite often some of the reason why we ask for more right-of-way. It's not necessarily always for the road, but it's also for the utilities that were required to service the areas.
Thiessen?
One final question. Um, and it, it actually-
Remove it, this is the final question.
No, no, this is it. Uh, and it actually is relevant to, uh, what, uh, I think you were saying before, uh, Mr. Cow. Um, so when we do the development of this road, and we acquire the land, and we push everything back, there's gonna be, interesting, a substantial, uh, movement of, uh, of all the utilities there. Like, uh, I was on that street, like, all the street lights are currently on the south side. We have overhead power lines that we're probably gonna have to dig up and, uh, put underline as well. Now, my question is in regards to that, and it's also in regards to the inlet roads, uh, to the businesses that we, we've created here. Are those the natural inlet roads, uh, just specifically on Ketties land? Is, uh, the ones that we've, that we've gifted them? So there's two inroads, three inroad, well, two inroads into the Ketties. Are those the natural, like, inroads to, to the business, the Ketties?
Those are not the current existing accesses.
Okay.
The, the accesses here have been modified and adjusted to, to provide safety for movement of traffic. Uh, we have minimum guidelines for separation spacing. Uh, part of the reason for the extra road widening over the initial roadway plan was the provision of the extra accesses and being able to have the vehicles, uh, get into the businesses without impeding the traffic flow.
Okay.
That is it. Thank you.
Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So, uh, don't, don't leave. Um, thanks, Chris, I covered a lot of ground there. Uh, my questions are more specific to, uh, some of the recommendations from the Chamber of Commerce. So, why not, number one, why not the service road to the north of 132nd on 100th Street?
Sorry, Councilor Radburn, do you want to clarify, is, uh, do you mean the sliplane access?
Slip access. North 132nd.
The, the reason for the slip in not being at the location where they requested is purely from a safety aspect. Um, when you have vehicles making that right turn, as well as going straight through and left turn, and trying to weave over to make in that access, um, it, it becomes a safety issue having it that close to the intersection. A good example was probably the number of accidents we had when 116th Street was under construction. The access to the post office was a lot closer to, uh, 84th Avenue, and with the road being closed south, people were coming around in rear-ending vehicles. So that's, mainly, it's like I say, it's a safety aspect of intersections. The more access and things you put around the intersection, the more distractions and more conflict points for drivers.
Okay, uh, you've answered, uh, you've answered, uh, in terms of the, number two, in terms of the left, 99th Street left turns. Uh, what about the right in, right out, uh, at the, uh, access behind Windsor Court, or Windsor Ford?
Again, if you look at the right slip-ins, the left turns north and south, and that one-on-two, the right into, uh, to Windsor Ford, it's, it's all from a safety perspective. Uh, that access at Windsor Ford, the separation from that is about a third of the old access it used to be on 100th Ave. into Burger King. And the province closed that, some, simply because of the number of accidents it was causing with the weaving vehicles trying to get across.
And, um, speak to the seven lanes, uh, the deceleration right turn lanes, and, uh, the need to have those given that we're at a 50, you're, you stated earlier, we're at a 50 kilometer an hour already.
There's, the sheer traffic volumes, uh, the traffic volumes in the modeling are indicating at full build-out at 90,000. This road will need to be six lanes at this location to handle the traffic volumes through the intersection, along with, uh, 100th Street north-south being a six-lane road to, uh, to handle the volumes. A lot of our current bypass should almost be six lanes with the traffic volumes we're seeing on there. And so when you have, increase, the initial plan had much more limited access, and when you increase the accesses like we have, without providing an excel-decel area for the vehicles and the trucks, they wind up blocking the through lanes of traffic, and it just reduces the overall capacity. Uh, we, we would only be, with the number of accesses and turning movements, it would actually, without the excel-decel lanes, it would reduce us down to, to actual through lanes of traffic in this location.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Councilor Clayton?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Given. I'm, guess I'm looking for some, uh, direction. I'm prepared to make a couple amendments, but I don't know if, uh, I guess how the rest of council feels, uh, if it's gonna help administration in regards to, if administration wants some direction on a couple amendments, or where we should go from here.
Well, I see a couple other council members, or at least one that, uh, one or two that haven't had an opportunity to speak yet.
Okay.
Uh, so, we'll see if they have questions for administration.
For sure.
Um, but certainly, any council member at any time can put forward a motion.
Okay.
Uh, would just ask if anybody's, um, considering doing that, um, take this time while others are asking questions, to be very specific about any amendments that you'd like to make to the plan, um, or any motions that you'd like to do to propose amendments, so that we get our wording right right off the bat, um, because we are starting to delve into, uh, a spot where council is, there are amendments being proposed, there are amendments that are being proposed to what is essentially a technical document, right? And so, we need to be very detailed if we're, uh, if anybody's considering bringing anything forward. Uh, so the others that I hadn't seen yet that are in the queues, Councilor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh, just a bunch of questions for, uh, our administration. If we were to remove 132nd Avenue sidewalks on the north side, um, I've got a couple questions to lead into this, or, would we lose the accesses that we have proposed in this document as it is? And, just to go with that, uh, you've got joint access preferred, uh, it's the third one from the left, uh, and I see it's, uh, highlighted in green. Uh, is that something that, uh, that we could make happen, or why is that there?
Mr. Cow, do you want to speak to the joint access, uh, issue first?
The, the joint access is just, from a safety perspective, reducing the number of accesses on this section of road when it, when the traffic volumes gets this high only, only makes sense to us from a traffic injuring perspective. And so that would be something to work out between the landowners, if they could work out a joint access. Uh, it would probably be, actually be beneficial to both the businesses as well. Um, they could, at least on the north side, they could potentially still keep, uh, their individual accesses and the joint access would help the circulation on both sites. On the, the south side, it's, uh, it's basically, there is concerns when we start approaching that 90,000 and that rail crossing that may be, that may need to be blocked off somehow, depending on what CN requires at that time. Right now, they're showing it open, which would make it difficult for the property immediately adjacent to the railroad tracks on the south side for vehicles coming from the east going west to turn south into his property.
Question that I have that I'd really like specifically answered is, if we remove the sidewalks from the north side, would it have any influence on the accesses going into those properties on the north side?
No, it wouldn't.
Okay. Um, so, all things considered, this is approved. Um, when would we make, start making changes?
We would start changes this fall.
Okay.
That, that is with the, uh, extension of the median across the service road on both sides of 100th Street to, uh, restrict the left turns in those locations. And again, that's, that's an overall safety factor that we've been looking at for quite a while. Um, we've actually come to council recommending it before the, the study was finalized.
And, uh, just one more, and then I'll leave you alone. Um, I know the access to the Petrican, uh, was brought up a couple times tonight. Um, and the reason that we're not allowing access from the 132nd Avenue is strictly, uh, for safety, and also the legalities regarding the Alberta government. Um, is that, is that correct?
It's, it's more for safety. It's not, uh, the, the provincial government has seen this document. Um, they are not prepared to officially comment on it, because they do not support the addition of any accesses on the provincial highway at this time, but they did think that this was a potential workable solution to improve- But they did think that this was a potential workable solution to improve the safety on the corridor.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given, and Norm.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole, let's see, Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor, you're just a question, Norm, it was brought up by, uh, Dan, uh, for Chamber of Commerce about, it wasn't really discussed, but on July eighth it was discussed, about the right slip in lane, uh, on a hundredth street there, and because it's under provincial jurisdiction and for them passing it, what was the reasoning given there? You know, if it was in our boundaries or because it's in their boundaries and how they go forward with it, with it.
They would look at any of these proposed accesses on a hundredth street on a case by case basis, there'd have to be an application for it. This is what our consulting is recommending from a safety access could be added safely to allow access into some of the businesses. It, it works much better, as you can see, downstream of an intersection or quite a ways upstream than it does right at the, uh, the recommending right at the intersection.
Counselor McLean, uh, now I see, Counselor Clayton, I see that you're back, and you can, I see Counselor writes a question, okay, Counselor Clayton.
It may have been addressed, thank you, Mayor Given, but I just wondered if administration can remind me or tell me why we wouldn't remove that concrete, uh, at the access of ninety ninth, um, rate where the, um, do you know which one I'm talking about, the first slurp of concrete, uh, basically north of Windsor Ford and, and sort of south of ninety ninth, there's a big chunk of concrete there to help for the backup of traffic that possibly would be turning left into ninety ninth if it's opened up. Why, why is that concrete still there?
Again, it's the intersection is too close to, in the ultimate volumes, the intersections, and both ninety ninth street intersections are too close for all directional turning movements. It's the recommendation of the consultant that they both be made right in. I'd like to remind you though, that the consultant's initial recommendation was to close ninety ninth street north and to have ninety ninth street on the south side as a right in, right out. And administrations use, they've, they've compromised quite a bit here on safety aspects and we still feel that potentially at the ninety thousand population, traffic volume numbers, I shouldn't say population, because it is with the traffic volume numbers that will drive it, that this will have to be reviewed again.
Can I just have a follow up question? Would it be completely absurd to have this document, um, more like a working document and as we get to the ninety thousand level, we, we revisit some of these issues, it seems to me that, um, some of these decisions, although in the future, you know, maybe that we, there's a bunch of accidents there and we deal with it then, but I mean, for right now, like, it, it just doesn't seem to make sense. We're, you know, we're thirty thousand people away from that.
Well, we typically like to have these as planning documents, just to kinda give people of an idea of what could be happening, worst case. We do use these as, uh, more of a, a guide as we go along, as we, like I say, not so much reach those population numbers, but we continuously do traffic counts on this road, we get the accident data from the, uh, RCMP every year. And we do have a look at that to see where our worst areas are, and we'll recommend capital upgrades, uh, not so much based on the population or the year, but based on what's actually happening on the roadway. Similar to a hundred and sixteenth street and a hundred and eighth avenue in the past, the, the upgrades were as done in staged in as we hit different populations.
I guess what I'm getting to there is, um, I'm assuming that the, in the planning of this, you've taken into factor all the other outlying roads that may in the meantime open as we grow to ninety thousand and, and you've outlined tho- outlined those somewhere as well?
Yeah, that's part of the reason why the, the project actually started in two thousand nine, it was put on hold till two thousand eleven in order to allow for the, the transportation master plan to be done. And so that's where they're getting the numbers and the figures, it's based on our, the citywide growth over that time period. So it, it does take into account, uh, additional roads potentially being built, like eighty fourth street, uh, a hundred and eighth street being upgraded, a hundred and sixteenth street being upgraded, as well as infill and development of these lands, so, uh, it takes into account the, the, the population and the growth and the traffic driven from the residential developments and future industrial developments in this area.
See, Counselor Rice.
I'm prepared to make a motion now.
Uh, that's good, I have a question, uh, or two, at least one, so Norm, uh, when administration was doing the planning or the consultant was doing the planning, based on, uh, this changed, um, concept, was there ever any consideration given of the, uh, loading dock access at the, at the current Kettie site and the, uh, ability for it to continue to function as it was designed?
Uh, well.
Was that item specifically looked at, uh, or did we look essentially at what public lands?
It was more looking at public lands and access and what we can provide, but, uh, um, it, it may have been a possibility, you know, with, based on looking at the entire neighborhood, the consultant came back recommending ninety ninth street be right in, right out. And to have that access basically right beside it, um, with these volumes, at that time of, the consultant was, was recommending it could not, could not remain, um, I suppose you could potentially consider putting it back in. Um, we could have him take a look at that, but I, it would, it would mean one would have to give either the closure of ninety ninth street or the loading bay being right beside ninety ninth street.
So, so just to be clear, so your view is that this, this ultimate alignment would preclude that, uh, that dock loading and, uh, I think there's a scale in there from functioning the way that it was intended. Can you, I saw a map earlier, uh, and I'm not sure if it was on your computer, where you had the original proposed, uh, layout and the currently proposed layout, that's, that's one, can you highlight, um, starting from west and working east, um, the significant changes?
Uh, significant changes was making a hundred and second street an all directional access, uh, intersection, originally that was at a hundred and third. Um, we would have had two T accesses, now we have a, uh, all directional a hundred and second that provides better access to the southwest corridor. We have, uh, kept a hundred and first street open with a right in off of a hundred and thirty second, as well as providing a turnaround there. We've kept the lane at between, uh, a hundredth and a hundred first as a right in going one way. Also recommending paving and upgrades of one twenty eighth and signals at one twenty eighth that will help access for all the businesses on the south side of one thirty second. We've added a right slip in for truck deliveries for Honda. We have added a right slip in for Windsor Ford. We have added a right out for Windsor Ford. We have kept ninety ninth street open as a right in, right out. We have allowed two accesses for Ketties development, which previously had one. Previous report had one. Yeah, yeah. We have, uh, ninety ninth street on the south side has still remained a right in, right out. But it has a decel lane for trucks and stuff to get into it. Um, we've added an access on a hundred and thirty second at the Cacko Stone property on the east end of the property where the property owner requested it. We have also made some changes up top that may, that were outside of the existing scope, we had looked at, uh, this being a potential all, at one thirty sixth avenue, potentially purchasing that parcel and providing a road access into the back of ninety ninth street. But, uh, with the traffic volumes and the intersection treatment of a hundred and thirty second and a hundred, those two intersection treatments overlap. So the consultant is actually recommending a signalized all directional access at a hundred and thirty ninth Ave up to the western budget, which would provide direct access north of these properties to access down ninety ninth street to into them. And all, right in, right out has been added to the traders property as requested by the developer and reviewed by Focus. We are also recommending on the south side, southeast corner, again, additional paving and some of the gravel roads to, uh, to help the businesses out there.
Thanks very much, Mr. Kyle. I don't see anybody else in the queue other than Counselor Rice who is ready to make a motion, uh, or is there anybody else that had any questions at this time? Counselor O'Toole, questions?
Um, when we did the traffic studies, uh, Mr. Kyle, um, thank you, Mayor Given, giving me the opportunity. Was there a lot of local big truck traffic, like I'm talking from the McCray Industrial Park, like, uh, the Cal Fracs and stuff like that? Or was it regional traffic coming in to use, uh, uh, I guess maybe there's probably no potential way of knowing that?
It's, it's a combination of both, uh, ninety ninth street is currently used by both the city businesses and the county businesses and the same as ninety seventh street. So, the, the traffic analysis was based on, on, you know, the cu- current counts and volumes and percentages of the trucks we're seeing now and then projected out with the growth horizons and, uh, based on land use planning and land use growth.
So I guess somebody from California hauling stuff up here, would they possibly use the hundredth, uh, street or would they probably come in off of a hundred and thirty second?
Antidoteally, what I heard throughout some of the meetings is that some of the businesses have, have deliveries that come off a hundredth street and some of them have deliveries that come off a hundred and thirty second avenue, even some of the ones that are on the service road on a hundredth street indicated that they, some of their deliveries come along the secondary highway because it is a secondary highway and a truck route.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. It's Counselor O'Toole, I don't see anybody else in the queue, um, so now would be the, uh, the time, if we have motions arising, um, Counselor Clayton?
No, Counselor Rice can go first.
Okay, Counselor Rice? Sure, whether you just, uh, enter your, on your pad, a little request to speak, can you get in the queue as you are now, Counselor Rice?
Okay, I move that this item be referred back to administration with a request for them to amend the map to include, uh, uh, right in and out on ninety ninth street on a hundred and thirty second avenue. A right slip ra- lane be included along a hundredth street. Uh, that, uh, the, uh, right in and out be added, uh, at the rear of Windsor Ford. And that, the amount of concrete and green space be reduced from forty four to approximately twenty five and that this, with these amendments be brought back to the August eleventh council meeting.
Okay, so, um, Counselor Rice, there's a few questions that I have about your motion. Specifically, at the end you said be reduced from forty four to twenty five, forty four to twenty five, what?
Okay, I, I think it's meters, I'm not good at that, but I, maybe I'll just amend that motion to say that the amount of green space and, uh, and concrete be reduced down substantially and that sidewalks be shown only on one side.
Did you have a side preference?
Yeah.
So if we put them on the north side of a hundred and thirty second, would that work for you?
I don't care, I think it should be on the south side, okay, I'll say south side.
I think the business owners care, and so this is, this Counselor Rice is where I was saying, we need to have specific motions, um, because administration's looking for some very specific direction. They brought forward a plan, and if council wishes to ask for some changes, we need to be really specific about what we're asking for. So, so sorry. Well, what, Counselor Rice, uh, maybe what we could do is rather than having a whole bunch of different things that we're describing badly, maybe we'd go one by one by one and describe them very clearly. So if somebody would like to make a motion on one specific item, Counselor Rice, would you be okay?
I, I don't think that they were that badly verbalized to start with. It was just till we got down to the concrete one that.
Well, actually, uh, also Counselor Rice, he mentioned in there, I believe, a, uh, motion, uh, regarding a right in, right out on ninety ninth. And I'm not sure which part of ninety ninth, there's two ninety nines, there's ninety ninth northbound and ninety ninth southbound, uh, and you didn't specify which. One of those is a, uh, right in and right out already, so that's where you need to be fairly specific on each of these. I'm happy to let your motion stand and, uh, council members can vote on it. If you'd like to leave it that way, or if you'd like to withdraw it and, and specify, uh, some of the specific, uh, some of the items, uh, we can certainly go through the one by one.
I'm, I'm happy to leave it stand, I think we've discussed it now for two and a half years, we've discussed it tonight extensively. If administration can't figure it out, I would be surprised.
Sure, so Counselor Rice, uh, wishes to let her motion stand, uh, open for discussion and debate, council? Uh, I see, so there are a few folks that are in the queue, uh, are you comfortable discussing and debating Counselor Rice's motion, Counselor Clayton?
I gue- I guess a question for, um, the access, the slip, right slip lane request, um, I'm wondering if Counselor Rice would be opposed to, uh, possible friendly amendment. I have a, I have a preference of where this be, I think that it needs to be a little more north of where this, uh, turnaround is. Um, and I'm wondering if Counselor Rice cares exactly where it is, I think that the right in, right out has to be, um, there, but i- it's better somewhere in between the one thirty six and one thirty second. And I, I do have a little bit of concern if it wa- were to be right where, um, the chamber has suggested only because of the traffic turning left off a hundred and thirty second, trying to get across a couple lanes to go into the right. So I think that it would be, in regards to safety, possibly, a little bit better if it was north of that, um, requested location.
Counselor Rice, did you have any specific location that you're looking for?
No, no, I agree.
Sure, Counselor Rice, do you wanna turn your microphone on, nobody heard any of that bit that you just said?
You know, I, I don't want us to start tinkering, uh, the, the suggestions came forward after many hours of consultation and I assume some, uh, nobody thinks this stuff up by themselves, so I assume they had some professional advice. So I, I don't wanna start tinkering.
Okay, so, um, Counselor Clayton, uh, the option that you'd have is to make a specific amendment to Counselor Rice's motion? Okay, uh, Counselor Logan?
We, uh, have a motion that has, uh, several active parts to it, uh, so I'd like to exercise my right to have the motion split into those component parts.
Sure, uh, we certainly can do that, that's essentially the same sort of thing as dealing with them on a one by one by one basis. Um, I think the challenge will be, did anybody at administration get all of the active parts of Counselor Rice's motion when she first said them? So, okay, so we'll, we'll go with it on a one by one basis, uh, Counselor Logan has, uh, any council member can ask for a motion to be split at any time. Counselor, okay, um, so, um, so, James, can you s- give us what the first portion of Counselor Rice's motion was? Oh, sorry, uh, and you're just gonna have to make sure that your microphone is down and live, otherwise, can we, and you're, yeah, there you go. There you go.
Okay, the first part of Counselor's Rice's motion was that the item be referred back to admin with request to admin the map showing a right in and a right out on ninety ninth and a hundred and thirty second avenue.
So that was the, that was the first one, sure, yeah, okay, uh, so that one is open for discussion and debate? Counselor Radman?
Hello, is that, is, uh, administration is not the, is that the one that we already have a right in, right out? Are we talking on the north side of a hundred and thirty second? Because there is a right in, right out, as I recall. Mr. Kyle?
Uh, I'm just concerned about this refer, being referred back to the, to administration because this is a very tactical document. It's been done by professional engineers, if there are changes made or requests for them to make changes that they don't agree with, they probably won't sign off. So I think any changes you wanna make at this stage should be a direction to, to administration so that the professional engineer does not have to put his signature on the changes that are proposed by council if he does not agree with them.
So, um, so just to clarify, Mr. Kyle, so, uh, at this point, uh, we wouldn't be sending it back to administration to ask administration to make changes? What you're suggesting is council would be making changes and then accepting that responsibility?
Yes, because a lot of these, uh, issues that have been raised, uh, the chamber has raised them on more than one occasion, the consultant has looked at these and his recommendation every time has come back the same and, and that's why we have the plan we have today. So for us to go back and look at potentially adding this stuff or not, at this stage. So for us to go back and look at potentially adding this stuff or not, at this stage, I think if council wants to make those changes, it needs to be their decision. Because I can't speak for Peter himself, but as a professional, I don't think he would sign off on something he does not believe is safe.
Sure, so just, just to clarify, uh, administration and the city's consultants have given their best advice and adopted as many of the proposed changes as they saw fit, uh, or comfortable doing in their professional opinion. Now, if council wishes to make changes beyond that, it's up to council to do that. Okay, okay. So it's, so again, so, uh, so with that, you know, I think the intent of Counselor Rice is to make changes to the plan.
Absolutely.
So then, uh, if everyone is comfortable with that, then the effect of any of these motions would be direct administration to amend the plan to include X or Y or Z, okay? So we're not referring anything back to anybody else. We're approving it here tonight, and council accepts the responsibility of making those changes.
My motion was to send it back to administration to amend the map, to reflect.
I think, uh, administration will amend the document based on the outcome of the council meeting.
So these engineers, just let me clarify, that won't sign off on this are the same ones, are they, that designed Ninety-Ninth Street a half a block out of alignment?
No, I think the ones that designed Ninety-Ninth Street a half a block out of alignment are probably dead by now, a while ago. Counselor Clayton?
Um, just a question for administration, um, uh, or possibly, um, for the mayor. If, uh, the document as presented isn't, uh, passed tonight without any amendments from council, uh, what would the engineer hope to do, achieve then?
Sorry, Counselor Clayton, how do you mean?
So, he, administration's suggesting that the, uh, engineer won't accept some of the changes that council is present, or is suggesting. If the coun- if, uh, council doesn't approve the document as presented, what would the engineer do then?
Sign off.
Mr. City Manager?
Exactly, so I mean, I don't understand the point of it.
We would, if this document did not get approved...
Mr. Kyle, sorry, I'm going to go either to our Director of Community Safety, uh, or to our City Manager, and we'll start with our Director of Community Safety. Mr. Quanti?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The overall intent of this project is to improve road safety. That's the paramount goal of this. This project has been in the books for about five years. Extensive consultation has been done. And, uh, this is a, what we believe is a balanced approach between maintaining the main function of this road, is an arterial road, and the main goal is to move traffic eastbound, westbound, on the north end of town. However, because of a current load configuration with businesses in the area that has been there for twenty, thirty years, what we're trying to do now is to plan for the next twenty years. So in twenty years, the next generation is not here sitting, discussing basically the same, uh, things we're discussing today. So keeping this in mind, providing adequate access to the businesses and improving road safety, we believe this is a balanced approach, uh, is a, is a medium. Traffic engineers probably will, will be happier with less accesses, probably three or four, instead of eleven, I think Norman we have. Uh, the supplementary report, the revised report, is, uh, allowing eleven accesses to the different businesses. So that is what the professional engineer is prepared to sign off. Uh, there are minimum distances from the center of an intersection, depending the geometric configuration, the traffic volumes, and the speed limit. So in this case, allowing, uh, slip lanes very, very close to intersection will increase the likelihood of an accident. If there is an accident, probably there will be an investigation, and the traffic engineer who signed off that will be questioned. So minimum standards must be maintained in order to achieve the overall goal of road safety. So that is the intent of the, uh, revised report that you have in front of you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Clayton, did that kind of get to the essence of what you were...
No, I mean, ultimately, if it, the engineers get a, this doesn't get passed tonight, the engineer is not going to do anything with it. And if, if engineers aren't going to work on the suggestions council make, ultimately, the engineer is not going to do anything either way. That's my comment, so.
Yeah, I guess, you know, that, I guess what we, you know, we need to understand the fundamental role of anybody who signs off on something, right? There are certain professions where you're accepting a certain amount of liability by signing off on something. And so, uh, in this, as in, I think, the legal profession and architecture and others, um, once somebody signs their name to that paper, they're saying, yes, I think that this is okay. And, uh, through this process, um, there's been substantial amount of change from the first irritation to this. Um, and I think what administration is telling us is that they, uh, they're communicating to us that they feel that the professional engineers who are required to sign off on this have said, this is as close as we can come to meeting all the competing needs. Beyond this, it's council saying, this is what we want. And, and so council can do that, and the plan will be adopted as such. The professional engineer, though, holds no responsibility because they have not signed off on those changes. The plan can exist. It's just the City of Grand Prairie City Council making the plan up, rather, based on recommendations from professionals, right? And adding our own stuff to it. Council has that authority and ability to add our own stuff, um, because we, we have a different responsibility than a professional who signs their name to a document. Does that, does that kind of get to it? So, so if we don't, if we don't approve the plan, then council has failed to plan. If we approve the plan with, as it is, then we've taken, uh, a, uh, amalgamation or combination of advice between, and, and balancing interests, uh, and tried to balance them out. If we approve, and, and that's fine, uh, if we approve the plan with additional changes, then we're adding our own perspective on top of, uh, the advice from the professionals. So, so those are kind of the options that are in front of us, and, and that's what we're considering doing when we're proposing changes. So I see a few people in the queue, um, some maybe, to be completely frank, I think we still have one motion, right? Uh, the first part, because we've asked to have it split. So we're still talking about that, uh, slip access is the first part. So I don't know if anybody in the queue is on that slip access, or sorry, right in, right out. Thank you, thank you. And so is there, uh, do we have people that want to speak to that? Counselor McLean, you're next up in the queue.
Mayor Given, I just, uh, we went from amendment motion from Counselor Rice to a split motion with, uh, Counselor, uh, Logan, uh, I didn't see a vote in there to have the split, and I guess maybe we don't have to. But, I mean, I would just like to know if there's enough councils willing to make the changes, a vote, instead of each individual, but whatever.
Yeah, actually, uh, Counselor McLean, in, whenever there's sort of multiple parts to a motion, any council member can ask to have it split at any time, and, uh, there's not a motion required to have that action. Counselor Radburn?
Okay, so a couple things. First of all, I, 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 I get it in terms of, uh, what administration and Mayor Given you're saying to us. But at the end of the day, this won't be the first time we haven't gone with exactly what an engineer said. We understand that. So that's why I want to continue the way we started, uh, with Dwight's help. Let's take a look at the suggestions one by one and vote on them, okay? And so we're on the first one, which is the Ninety-Ninth right in, right out. My rec- my question on that one is, don't we already have that? So I don't think we need that. Helen?
No, yep, that's not the, uh, backside of Windsor Ford one, right? Right? So I don't, so it...
So Counselor, Counselor Rice, were you intending Ninety-Ninth Northbound or Ninety-Ninth Southbound, because we know they don't align up?
Then aren't they both right?
Currently, both Ninety-Ninth North and Ninety-Ninth South appeared to me to be right in, right out already.
That's right. Oh, you want a left turn on Ninety-Ninth? Okay, that's different.
Okay, so not a right in, right out.
All right.
You want a left-hand turn on Ninety-Ninth?
Okay, it's different.
So you want, so you want Ninety, okay, okay? Okay, so council, we clear on what Counselor Rice is asking for? Okay, so, so now that we've got that clarified, so both Ninety-Ninth Street North and Ninety-Ninth Street South would both retain, um, left, left-turning movements, okay? Or all directional access. Uh, discussion and debate? Counselor O'Toole?
I asked the question earlier, and the queuing was for approximately twelve vehicles. In this city, we have very long and wide loads, and I think we would be deemed, uh, ridiculous to allow that. We already have a lot of accidents, near misses and deaths, uh, in the past few years at the one Thirty-Second and one Hundredth. And, um, I would not be in favor. I would like to see something there, but I can't see it happening without some serious accidents happening, so I will not be voting for that.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Thiessen?
Uh, thank you very much. Um, I'm, I'm more inclined to think that perhaps, uh, maybe half of the left turn access is, is doable. I'm looking more at the north side. Uh, the recommendation at the top that came forward from the chamber was left turn access to Ninety-Ninth Street North or South. I'm willing to approve a left turn access on both, because, uh, especially for me, just looking at the north access, it is an accident waiting to happen, or at least a logjam of traffic if you want to turn left on that road. Uh, but I do think there's room to shave down that meridian from the south side of the street and hang a left turn access there, so. On the original motion, I probably won't be able to vote for the left turn on the north and south. But if it was changed from this one or the other, I might be able to get in line.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, just a question to Norm. Uh, they do different percentages of, uh, big traffic, uh, like semis that travel up in this area and say like Calgary or Edmonton or other communities. What's, do you have any percentages here compared to, uh, other communities in Alberta of what we're going through up here in the City of Grand Prairie?
Mr. Kyle?
Most, uh, most cities, uh, historically and typically, even the traffic engineers that do reports for us out of Edmonton, Calgary, Vancouver, Toronto, use truck values in the range of three to six percent. Uh, roads such as this in the City of Grand Prairie, for, for this, we're probably using around twenty percent heavy trucks here. We go as high as twenty-eight percent heavy trucks on our roads. Um, but the bypass and, uh, these truck routes into town, typically you're looking in the eighteen, twenty percent truck range, which is, uh, Whitemont and Edmonton, they use around three percent.
Okay, uh, any other folks that'd like to, discussion or debate? Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. There are other parts of this motion that I, I can support. This one, I cannot. I just think that technically it's impossible to do it safely, given the distance from a Hundredth to Ninety-Ninth.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. Counselor Clayton?
Much like Counselor Thiessen, I, um, I would support the motion if it was, uh, left turn access to Ninety-Ninth Street North. But I, I won't support the motion based on, uh, access to north and south.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. I don't see anybody else in the queue. I'll say that I won't be supporting the motion. Like Counselor Edburn, I don't, uh, think that this is, uh, I think this is one of the, essentially a non-negotiable, the amount of, uh, vehicles that will be stacking to make the left-hand turns south onto a Hundredth. Um, I believe that this is needed for vehicle, vehicle queuing, and certainly will be needed for vehicle queuing, uh, into the future. Opening up either of those left-hand turns, either of them for me, uh, causes a conflict that is, uh, is not acceptably safe in my mind. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I'm going to call for the vote. Sure, uh, Williams, would you like to read back the motion, just so we all remember what it is, what we're voting on here?
Sure, we have the motion moved by Counselor Rice to direct administration to include in the one hundred and Thirty-Second Avenue functional study a left in and out on Ninety-Ninth and one hundred and Thirty-Second Avenue South.
Counselor Rice, was that your intention? Only south, or were you intending north and south? North and south?
North and south.
So, so everybody's clear. Counselor Rice's motion was intended to be north and south, and so that's what we're voting on? Uh, I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That, that motion does not carry, um, so we'll move on to the next portion. Ms. Williams, what do you have for us for the next portion of Counselor Rice's motion?
Okay, the next motion is moved by Counselor Rice to direct administration to include in the one hundred and Thirty-Second Avenue functional study a right slip lane be included along a one Hundredth Street.
Counselor Rice, was there anywhere in particular at a Hundredth Street that you wanted that? Is it northbound, southbound? Can you be a little specific? It's a fairly long stretch of road. No? Okay. Okay, so northbound? Uh, so open for discussion and debate, Counselor Rice's motion. Counselor O'Toole?
I was wondering if I could get some help from, uh, our administration. Is it deemed safe access off that road? I know the location that's on the map right now, um, where the little, uh, turnabout is, is probably too close to the intersection as proposed. Uh, could you give me some kind of an idea, or council members, uh, where we would probably be looked at as a favorable location other than the proposed one Thirty-Sixth Avenue?
Mr. Kyle?
Minimum recommendations from the consultant on a right in, right out for Southbound was, uh, just over a hundred meters from the intersection. We anticipate, I had anticipated if, if they were making any sort of recommendation, we would follow that minimum one hundred meters. Bearing in mind that this would be a right slip in only, because in order to design it in, in such a way, um, vehicles would only be able to go on to the service road and go north. They would not be able to use such a, uh, right slip lane in order to turn around and go south to Petrocan.
Thank you very much for that information.
Counselor Clayton?
Based on the motion, I, 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 if we're talking a hundred meters, I think that the, uh, perfect location, a hundred meters, puts us, if I measure it roughly, about halfway, um, before a Hundred and Thirty-Six, which on the current maps right now puts us just, uh, north of the UFA building. Um, and, uh, I have, I do, I think that that would be a great location. I do have a question for administration, though. His last comment in regards to, um, them not being able to access the service road going south. I don't understand why they couldn't do a right in and take a right-hand turn and go to Petrocan.
There, there, if you look at the, uh, one on the south, uh, southwest corner there, there'd be insufficient room for a vehicle to make that turning movement to go, to go back north, uh, on a right slip lane such as that. You, you throw a larger vehicle in there, it becomes even more difficult, so if we're looking at the... We're looking at this here, a vehicle coming in here, there'd be insufficient room for them to make that turning movement. We'd actually probably sign that one way, because someone who came in there and tried to turn around and go back south would wind up having to block the road and do a three or four-point turn to get turned around.
So, Mr. Kyle, so you're, so you're using the, uh, slip lane heading south on a Hundredth, on the west side, as a demonstration? Can you describe that sort of turning movement that would be required?
Exactly, you are. That is example of what, what, uh, putting in a right slip lane is to us, and it would be something similar. If we put in something more that would allow vehicles, it would wind up being more like the, uh, right in, right out with the left slip. We have a one hundred and Thirty-Sixth Avenue.
Counselor Clayton, do you have any...
Well, I, I'm sorry, I have a hard time believing that that land space is the same where your right slip in is, um, now to Honda compared to that land at U, at UFA there, and looks to me to be a lot wider. And I don't understand how there's not a possibility for a vehicle to take a right-hand turn. This isn't access for commercial vehicles and, and, and access for him to, to Petrocan to get their pumps filled. This is access for people to access the business.
Yes, and I'm only mentioning that because I know that on this one side. I, we haven't done a detailed analysis, so I'm, I'm giving you what I, what I know for information from what we've looked at in the report already.
Any other discussion or debate? I don't see anybody in the queue. I, uh, I won't be supporting the motion, uh, because it doesn't define where that access should go. Um, I'm, I'm not, uh, I'm not comfortable with just saying that we want one somewhere. I think we need to be a little bit more specific than that. Uh, I certainly don't feel comfortable giving that direction to administration. Again, I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I will call for the vote. Um, do we need a red back?
Okay, well, I have no problem making... Okay, well, I have no problem making a suggestion for a friendly amendment to Counselor Rice's motion.
Sure, we don't do friendly amendments. We do amendments by motion.
Thank you. Amendment by motion. Uh, I would, I would move that uh the current motion on the table be amended to reflect the location of the right-in access, right-out access. Be uh from what I see on a Google map, being approximately at the current location of uh just north of the, or probably parallel to the entrance to UFA. It's which, if you want to put it on a map, is about halfway between a hundred and thirty second and a hundred and thirty six.
So why don't, just for clarity and rather than referencing the business, why don't we say at the midpoint between? So that's, that's a little bit more specific. So I think we can kind of all see. And uh Counselor Clayton, uh and you mentioned in your comments just then, right in, right out?
All right, I'll leave it at the right in. Fine.
Because I think Counselor Rice's motion was specific to right. So, Ms. Williams, do you want to give us a report back on what you what you heard there?
Okay, I have here that's moved by Counselor Rice to direct administration to include in the hundred and thirty second avenue functional study. A right slip lane be included northbound along a hundred and hundredth street midpoint between a hundred and thirty second and a hundred and thirty six.
So Counselor Clayton actually has a um the midpoint, the location is an amendment?
An amendment, okay.
So I'll call for a discussion debate on the amendment proposed by Counselor Clayton. Counselor Clayton?
Sorry.
Just one more question for administration. Um, if this proposed right slip lane was voted and approved, uh when would we see that uh possibility take place in the pro- program that we got in place now?
Just a guess, but the earliest would probably be the seventy eight thousand or the seventy nine thousand to the ninety thousand. Um, I can say without analyzing it further, it's tough to tough to indicate.
You're thinking maybe ten years from now? Okay, thanks. Uh, any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nobody in the queue, then I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Okay, Ms. Williams, uh two opposed. What have you got next for us? I know you're recording votes as well. What's the next, next portion of the motion? Sorry, now we're back to the main motion as amended. Um, so the main motion as amended by Counselor Clayton, back onto Counselor Rice's motion now.
Okay, so then now we have moved by Counselor Rice to direct administration to include in the hundred and thirty second avenue functional study. A right slip lane be included northbound along located midpoint between a hundred and thirty second, a hundred and thirty six.
Exactly, that's how I remember. Okay, so back to, okay, so that's the the main motion. Uh, any discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries with one opposed. Okay, so what was the next portion of that omnibus motion from before?
Okay, the next one that we have is moved by Counselor Rice to direct administration to include in the hundred and thirty second avenue functional study, a right in and right out access be added at the rear of Windsor Ford.
Uh, any discussion or debate on that one? Sounds pretty clear and direct, specific. Essentially allowing for a right in uh into the Windsor Ford property, uh where currently the map shows a right out. Discussion debate? I don't see anybody in the queue. Uh, I will say uh then that I will not be supporting this motion. Uh, I believe that uh the conflict between southbound traffic coming off of a hundredth street and turning east to go down a hundred and thirty second uh creates a natural, a national, excuse me, a natural crossing pattern. Uh, so if you have somebody coming south on a hundredth wants to try to make a quick turn into this new right in, um that is a hazard uh from the people going north on a hundredth street that end up turning west. Yeah, essentially have two uh traffic flows crossing each other and I, that's not a situation we experience in areas in the community. I've never felt comfortable with them and I, I won't put that here. I don't see anybody else in the queue for discussion and debate, so I'll call for the vote. That motion uh on a tie does not pass. So I think we're on to our next portion. Ms. Williams, what do you have next for us?
Okay, the next one is moved by Counselor Rice to direct administration to include in the hundred and thirty second avenue functional study. A reduction in the amount of concrete and green space.
Okay, that's how I remember it. Um, discussion or debate on that motion? Counselor Redburn? I think what we're Ms. Williams, were you bringing the sidewalks for s- as an additional?
Yes, that would be the next one coming up.
Okay, so sidewalks are next after this. She certainly did say green space and Okay, uh, Counselor Edburn. Uh, Counselor Edburn, can you make sure your microphone just with the
This is nothing new with the sidewalk or the trail. This is in the middle of the road. Have any idea of how much? The concrete jumble you were jungle you were talking about is the is the length of the meridian, isn't it? That's, it's there for safety reason, and that's why we couldn't get into a hundred and thirty second. It ha- it just adds to the safety.
Counselor Rice, would you like to turn on your microphone? Some people watching would be able to hear.
We tend to make these extremely wide. And then so because they're so wide, we plant grass in them, which doesn't ever grow because as has been pointed out in the winter, we dump salt and sand and all that on it. And so you may as well just make it narrower to begin with.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor McLean?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, I won't be voting again for this. I believe in uh safety on roads crucial in this intersection. And I do believe in uh lots of green space.
I guess I have a question for administration. First of all, can administration tell me how wide the um concrete uh and hopefully, I guess it's green space as well, uh is at ninety ninth street and as well uh east of um ninety seventh street? How wide is it?
It's really more of a detailed design stage item, but uh at this point, you know, we would get into that detailed design. Just want to pull the cross-sections up to see what we have at the cross-sections at that point. But judging from what I see here, that median at ninety ninth at the uh the east ninety ninth street would be a meter and a half to two meters wide, probably maybe three meters in its widest. And over east of one thirty second avenue.
East of ninety seventh?
Uh, east of ninety seventh street on one thirty second. Yeah, I'm just uh that one in the initial report was proposed to be, no, that's not it. They're just showing typicals outside of this area, actually, so they're showing the typical five and a half meter wide island that you'd have on uh hundred sixteen street. Um, there's not enough detail for me to accurately say, but I would guess looking at that, that it would be similar to, in this area at least, it would be similar to to uh the widest point in between ninety ninth and a hundredth. Probably around three meters, three and a half meters.
Counselor Clayton?
No, 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 no.
Sorry.
Five meters, so twenty feet. Um, I will support the motion. Um, I do agree that green space is needed. I'm uh always an advocate for green space when it's actually green. However, um I I support the motion based on the fact that removal as much concrete as possible to make the roadway as safe as possible. However, I think in some of these areas, there's definitely overkill.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Um, any other discussion or debate? Uh, so I will say that I won't be supporting the motion. Again, because uh in this circumstance, in this situation, sorry, on this specific item, I don't think that we can be specific enough. As we heard Mr. Kyle say, we're not at a detailed design stage. I believe center medians probably, probably. Because, you know, again, we're getting out of such things that council typically deals with, but probably respond to specific site conditions. So how much road width the city actually can get, uh and uh and those kind of detail things that happen when you actually go to design and build a project. Right now, uh the level that this is intended to be at is how traffic will flow, how many lanes there are. Uh, we're not talking at this level of detail about how tall the curbs will be, how wide they will be, what color of cement we'll use. Those are, those are very detailed things that council would see at the engineering design stage, uh which happens just before you tender the project and award construction. Um, so uh I'm not comfortable supporting this motion, given the fact that it is not specific. And it's very hard to apply it at at this level of detail. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so then I will call for the vote. Again, that motion does not carry on a split vote. Ms. Williams?
Alrighty, the last one is moved by Counselor Rice to direct administration to include in the hundred and thirty second avenue functional study sidewalks to be shown on one side.
Counselor Rice, is that accurate? Is that reflective of the intended? Sorry, so you're, so, so sidewalks included on the south side?
Only.
Okay, um, so Counselor Rice is uh comfortable with that motion. Council's heard it. The effect would be to have sidewalks only on the south side of a hundred and thirty second street. Open for discussion and debate. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given.
To be specific.
Thanks, hundred thirty second avenue, right. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll be voting against this and numerous reasons about uh um new homes being built on the the northwest where traffic will be flowing and then you did stop them and make them come over and come across. And uh where home people are going to be living, it is changing the demographics there. They will be living side by side with commercial. And if you look at the Arbor Hills area, commercial's going to be right in front of it and homes are going to be right to the side of it on west. And you're going to have major traffic and we got to start thinking about mobility. It will be not before this.
Counselor McLean, Counselor Clayton?
I absolutely will support this motion. I think that uh one side, the south side specifically, is enough. I would be willing to make an uh motion for an amendment, though. I would like to see added to the the current motion that a um a crosswalk, we ensure that a crosswalk is added to a hundred and second street and that sidewalks continue east to south from a hundred and second street heading west. Uh, I understand Counselor McLean's concerns with Arbor Hills, uh and I can, I can appreciate that, but give me a break that people can't cross the road to, but I mean, I think that uh the sidewalks in front of Arbor Hills are essential. But there's going to be such traffic moving from, or sorry, pedestrian traffic, cycling traffic moving from the east end um in the um Crystal Lake area. South side, all the way till we get to a hundred and second, in my mind, is sufficient, so I would like a motion, make to make a motion to re- amendment to the current motion to reflect that the sidewalks uh go back to both sides of the road at a hundred and second street.
So I'm having a little bit of a challenges with the wording. Um, so Counselor Rice's motion was to see it only on the south side uh of a hundred and thirty second. And your motion is uh you'd like to see that amended to be? I guess uh I'm having a tough time with that if there are council members that feel that they can follow that, that, you know, I think the clearest way to do this um would be I don't know, counsel, do you do you think you can follow that? Ms. Williams, do you, administration is having a difficult time following that, because we have one motion that's saying sidewalks only on the south.
May I?
Yeah, I, that's kind of, thanks, so I'm kind of leaning that we need to deal with the first motion on this one, just to keep it clear, because it's challenging, I think, even for administration to capture it. Uh, I think we say, uh, Counselor Rice's motion, do we want to have sidewalks just on the south side? If not, if that motion doesn't pass, uh then we could have a motion that says we want to have sidewalks through this section. Um, so that's, that's, so we won't accept any amendments, Counselor Clayton, just for clarity. So on Counselor Rice's original motion, Counselor Tison?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. Um, I kind of think I I knew what Counselor Clayton was trying to throw down there. I think uh for myself personally, I'll try to clarify this, uh but I want to stick with the original motion too, so we can get that out of the way. Um, when you start putting like sidewalks on the north side?
So, sorry, counsel, so you're addressing the original motion then?
Yeah, of course, yeah. But uh I I'm just going to sort of elaborate where I think Counselor Clayton was going with her amendment. Not that I'm just going to speak on the amendment, but in my opinion, when you add uh what we have is a commercial district that's going to be up on ninety second street and you have residential over on the other side. Uh, then you have this industrial section. And my concern is, is that people coming over from the residential or commercial section who are traveling on the the right-hand side of the street could actually become a safety issue just driving through the red, the industrial zone. Uh, my, my opinion is if we have the grassway and place the pile as well as the wider sidewalk along the south side. I think that would be more than sufficient going through the uh, going through an industrial section, considering that all the residential is already on the south side of the road. And currently our plans aren't to build residential on the north side of that road up until Arbor Hills, which I suppose we can get to later. But I don't see a need for a sidewalk on the north side.
Thanks, Counselor Tison. Anybody else in the queue? Okay, I don't see anybody. Um, I uh won't be supporting the motion the way that it's worded applies to all of a hundred and thirty second. Um, and we have to keep in mind that uh what the map that we're looking at today is only one portion of the hundred and thirty second street plan. Um, the motion as worded applies to the entire plan, so there'd be no sidewalks on on the north side of the thing through the entire plan, therefore I won't support it. I would potentially be able to support a motion that was worded in such a way that said move to exclude sidewalks from a specific area between such and such, such and such point. I won't be supporting this motion. Uh, Counselor Tison, I see you in the queue.
Well, let me give a crack at it. I'm, I suck at making amendments.
So we have one motion on the floor right now that says exclude all sidewalks on the north side of a hundred and thirty second. We're going to deal with that one.
Let's do it.
Then we can deal with any others that might come as a result of that. Okay? I don't see anybody else in the queue to speak to the motion that's on the floor. Do we need it read back? We're pretty clear what it, what it is. Not seeing anybody requesting it being read back, so I will call for the vote. That motion does not carry, uh so now uh we have the opportunity for any follow-up motions. Counselor Tison, I see you in the queue. If I can give you a piece of advice, just for for clarity, um make your motion however you wish. Ideally, though, it's specific, if you're going to exclude sidewalks from an area, maybe you can mention that a hundred and thirty second plan, a hundred and thirty second avenue plan be amended to exclude sidewalks from a specific area.
Thank you for the advice, uh Mayor Bill. That's exactly where I was going to go. Um, uh, and I would like to make that amendment that uh that they, or I'd like to make a motion for an amendment uh to uh the sidewalk issue. So, if I may, uh uh in the plan, they're addressing a hundred and thirty second have to exclude sidewalks on the north side of a hundred and thirty second ave in the industrial district. Oh, sorry, from ninety, let's go from ninety seventh street to a hundredth street.
Thank you, that's the, that we can work with. Okay? Okay, so we have a motion specifically um that would propose an amendment to the plan to exclude the north side sidewalk between ninety seventh street and a hundredth street. Street and 100th Street. Council Thieson, that's correct?
Yep.
Okay, open for discussion and debate, Councilor O'Toole.
My concern is at the major intersection, how do you plan on finishing that off, Mr. Thieson? People that are coming from the west side want to get to the east side on the north side of the road, would we lock off that access to the intersection as well?
Council Thieson?
Or would we start at Petrol Town and leave that as a crosswalk on all four directions?
Well, I would, I would assume that we could leave it as a crosswalk on all four directions, but yeah, my opinion of that, of that section of the road is, once you cross over from 100th Street, you all of a sudden start entering into residential neighborhood areas and stuff like that. It's a quick cross across the street as well, one way or another, and then you have your natural right access. I see it all the time in larger city centers, even in this, even in this town here, too, where we force our pedestrians or people to cross streets at certain intersections and to carry on as it is, so.
Councilor Rice?
We do this all the time, as Councilor Thieson mentioned. You go to 84th Avenue and 100th Street, the sidewalk goes up one side of the road until 84th Avenue, and then the sidewalk switches over to the opposite side of the road. So, pedestrians make two crossings to stay on the, you know, on that sidewalk, and I, it's not a, you know, particularly tragic corner.
Councilor Clayton.
First of all, I just wondered if the motion could be read back to me, because I do have one possible amendment to it.
Ms. Williams?
We have moved by Councilor Thieson to direct administration to exclude in 132nd Avenue functional study sidewalks from the north side of 132nd Avenue in the industrial district from 97th Street to 100th Street.
All right, thank you. So, I would move that the motion be amended to be not to 97th Street, but to 92nd Street.
Okay. So, that motion's in order, specific, back to 92nd Street?
Can I just follow, based on the information that administration presented earlier, that the empty lands to the north of 132nd right now are zoned industrial slash commercial?
It's Council Clayton. Councilor, so now we're discussion and debate on Councilor Clayton's amendments, which is to take it back to 92nd Street. Councilor O'Toole.
I'm in full agreement with this. I feel that it would do a lot of benefit, and I encourage my other council members to along with me.
Council McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm not in favor of this. If you go in the industrial area, there is no crosswalks now, and this will be the only one on the outside perimeter, so it's better than something and nothing. There's already nothing there hardly, so, unless you're walking through a parking lot or on the road or in a wheelchair, whatever accessibility, I think our mobility plan speaks to a lot of areas of things in the past that were done wrong that we need to change in the future, so I would not be supporting it.
It's Council McLean. I don't see anybody else in the queue. I'll say that I would be able to support the original motion. I won't be supporting the amendment, and I won't support the amendment because what we're talking about to the east of the railway tracks in 97th Street, sorry, is essentially greenfield development, and so we can make accommodation for this type of infrastructure. I see the exclusion of sidewalks and this type of pedestrian infrastructure as sort of a last resort, the last thing I possibly want to do. The only situation where I could support that is where it's trying to balance a reasonable accommodation of existing businesses and property owners. So, on that basis, I could support the original motion, but going back and applying this to what is essentially greenfield development, that will develop to whatever standard we set, something I won't be voting for. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I'll call for the vote on the amendment, which was to extend the exclusion of sidewalks on the north side of 132nd Avenue, all the way back to 92nd Street. Thank you. So, the amendment does not pass, so we're back to the original motion, which was the exclusion of sidewalks on 132nd Avenue between 100th Street and 97th Street on the north side. Any further discussion or debate? Everybody feels they've had a good go around on this one? Okay, then I'll call for the Thank you. That motion does carry. Were there any other items from Councilor Rice's original motion that were left to be split out? Council Rice, I think that captured all of them, I'm seeing from administration. Were there any items that haven't been addressed that council would like to address? Councilor Clayton?
I have two motions that I would like to make. I would like to make a motion that in reflection of the 132nd Plan Study, that access, a left turn access at 99th Street heading north be included in this plan.
Okay.
No, well, we didn't, because it said north. It said left both ways. This is a left-only at 99th North.
Ms. Williams, can you clarify the motion that we voted on previously, Council Rice?
Okay, we're looking at the motion made by Councilor Rice for a left-in and out?
That's the one, yeah.
Okay, it's to include a left-in and out on 99th and 132nd Avenue, north and south?
Okay.
And it was defeated.
So, it was specific to north and south, and that was defeated. Okay, so Councilor Clayton, go ahead. So, your motion is to include...
Left turn access to 99th Street heading north off of 132nd.
Okay, so is everybody clear on that one? Okay, open for discussion and debate. Council Clayton's motion? I don't see anybody in the queue. I'm, I'll speak to this. I have the same objection as previous. I believe that this creates one of those unsafe patterns where you will essentially be creating an X of traffic that will be conflicting as they try to cross, and so I certainly won't be able to support this motion. Council Thieson?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. I will, I will be voting for this motion, and it's, just based on my own perception, I think that a lot of the safety issue, especially on that left turn going north, can be mitigated with a deceleration, like, of the speed limit assigned, placed in that area that could slow traffic before it gets to that point where it becomes a safety issue, so people aren't taking that corner at 50 or 40, which is within their, their speed limit. If we were to drop that turn to, like, a 30 coming out of it or whatnot, makes people travel, or I guess, traffic going a lot slower through there, and gives people ample time to still cut across.
Council Clayton?
In further discussion of this motion, I, the, for me, the access of this left turning north is essential for many reasons, and the business is such, but part of the access which may need to be put forward into another motion is a decrease of some of this concrete on the west tip of the current suggested concrete island. So, to create a little bit more vehicle space for, as you refer to it, as lining up, I think that if this motion is passed, which I hope it is, because it's essential for the businesses on the north side of this 132nd, that we will have to look at reduction of concrete on that section there.
Just to speak to that, I think, again, we're, once we get beyond that, we're getting into detailed design. Council's saying, I think, council expressing the fact that they wanted an access to allow that movement would probably be enough, and administration would design it to be appropriate standards to enable that, so. One additional thing that I will say about this as well, just to take another turn in the debate, is to say that I think that this left turn provides natural conflict between the vehicles that will be headed west and turning south onto 100th. We heard already from one delegation today that even at our current traffic volumes, there are times of the day during peak periods where we see vehicles backed up at this intersection past the Ketties' property, heading east, sorry, vehicles backed up to the east past the Ketties' property. The effect of this motion would be to try to force vehicles to cross those other vehicles that are backed up waiting to get through the lights, and, you know, so then we've just created a point where you have vehicles stopped, other vehicles stopping, so they can try to cross the vehicles that are stopped. Obviously, this intersection fails, so for those reasons, I won't be able to support. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Last opportunity. Okay, I'll call for the vote on Council Clayton's motion. The motion does not carry. Council Clayton, you said you had a couple? That was the one? Any, anything further? Any other further business arising from 132nd? Councilor McLean?
I just had a question, Bill, from number two motion we made, rights that Blaine requested that passed to administration. The province owns this part of the section of the road, so I mean, they're going to be looking into if we can even do it. Norm, would we have to buy the road to be allowed to do this? Would they allow us to even do this? That's my question.
Mr. Cal?
If the road was under the city's jurisdiction, then council would have the right to make that motion. Right now, any access, like I mentioned earlier, on 100th Street is subject to approval by Alberta Transportation, and their current direction is not to approve any additional accesses. We did get the access at Windsor Ford approved, and like I mentioned earlier, they are supportive of relocating that intersection at 139th.
So, just the remainder of my question, thank you, Mayor Given, for everybody's patience. So, I know council has passed that, but in reality, administration looks at it, they
Can administration tell me what plans have been made, if any, in regards to the relocation of the Welcome to Grand Prairie sign?
At this stage, we haven't made any firm plans, but we have had discussions with planning, and what they were looking for was a, potentially a strip of land for a welcome sign to Grand Prairie on the Trader's Ridge property, not necessarily a drive-in, something that would be more like a welcoming to downtown, a nice welcome sign that would potentially direct people to the Centre 2000, which is a lovely facility we have for visitors. And this would actually allow us, adopter of this plan would allow us, when we close the 140th Avenue right away, between what's called the Sharkfin historically, it would allow us to use that closed road right away and potentially negotiate with the developers of Trader Ridge for a little bit more to have space up there for a nice entry feature
Come to downtown sign, do you mean nonexistent?
I meant the Grand Prairie, Welcome to Grand Prairie sign that's at the entrance of downtown now.
Are there any further amendments that council's looking to make? Council Clayton?
The council adopt the 132nd Avenue functional study and supplementary report with the proposed amended, as amended, sure, thank you, as amended.
Okay, okay, so any discussion or debate? Just to speak to this, you know, it's with extreme caution, I think, that council makes amendments to plans that come forward from administration. There's a reason why people attend school to learn how to design these things for years, and I think, but council does have a responsibility to try and balance the competing interests of existing landowners and, you know, future access, and so we do have a role there. I think we have to exercise caution when we do that. I'm generally supportive of the amendments that have been made, and I think they probably get us as close as we will get in an existing area to balancing those competing interests. So, I don't see anybody else in the queue. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries with two opposed, and we can move on to our one other piece of business from that committee. Believe it or not, there was still more.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council award tender T-48-552-14, 124 street upgrades to Wapta gravel suppliers in the amount of $1,593,425.01 exclusive of GST as a lowest bidder meeting specifications.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. That motion carries. Was there any other items that you wanted to highlight from that committee meeting, Councilor McLean?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. It's not that I want to extend the council meeting any longer than we are. I probably have a question to Director Raschio, is this project won't be starting until September, and I was kind of wondering about it getting paved, and we have pavement in here. So, I guess the question is, if all the stars lined up, it should be paved?
Director of Community Safety, Mr. Flante?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that's correct, Councilor McLean. The tentative paving day will be end of September, so the project is going to start in late August, early September. It involves earthwork and drainage and electrical conduits to be placed, but if the weather cooperates, the plan is to be paving by the end of September this year.
Thanks very much. I believe that handled all of our committee business? I'm sorry, do we vote on that? Did we vote on that? We're going to pave that road? Okay, okay, good.
I certainly hope so.
Thank you. Okay, so that does finish all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence tonight. I believe our delegation business was generally all related to 132nd, unless I missed anything. We had no notices of motion, and... Sure, Council Rice, if you'd like to make that motion, it has obviously been dealt with, given that we referenced it, but might as well.
I move that, we receive that delegation's presentation for information.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Rice. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. We had no notices of motion, and council member reports. I know a number of council members did not have any. Were there any councilmembers that I didn't get a chance to speak to that had any external reports from agencies, boards, or commissions? Sure, Council Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just wanted to report that I had the opportunity to attend a Northern Alberta elected leaders meeting in La Crete last week. It was a great opportunity to meet people from around the region and discuss concerns, some of them similar, some of them not. I also, at that time, got to meet any of the people that are hoping to discuss with council opportunities going forward regarding regional municipalities, so, thank you.
Thanks very much, Council Clayton, and thanks for attending that on our behalf. Anybody else that had any external agencies, boards, and commissions? Seeing none, then we'll start council member roundtable, and Council Clayton, you're the last to speak, so we'll start there.
I apologize, I am not prepared for that yet. I have had a busy couple of weeks, as well as going to La Crete. I had an opportunity to meet with Stephen Hinckley, the Chief Crown Prosecutor, as well as some other councillors and the mayor, and discuss crime and the, and the concerns and the caseloads, et cetera, of our prosecutors. They are over max, and the courthouse is full, and, and there's a lot of concerns there going forward that we, as council, could possibly play a lobbying role with our provincial government, rather, in the processing of some of these cases. I also had the opportunity to attend a huge Canada Day parade, but I'll let some other people talk about that. It was a great opportunity, and as well, I'll let some of the other people talk about our team in the hospital bed race. That was an excellent, fun day had by all, and other than that, I think it's just been busy with meetings, but I'll leave it to the rest, so thank you.
Thanks, Council Clayton. Councilor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Over the last couple of weeks, I attended 14 events. I know it was quite a busy couple of weeks, once again. I didn't attend all the things that we were invited to, but... Once again, I didn't attend all the things that we were invited to, but did my fair share, I think. Once again, I would like to just speak on three of them. I did also attend the Crown Prosecutor Stephen Hinckley and very eye-opening conversation that we had with him, and some of the concerns that he has as trying to function, and the caseloads and the amount of people, and that sort of stuff. One of the, probably the most emotional event that I attended since being on council, and that goes back a few years, was the parks naming ceremony. And I feel that, I get choked up now, actually, so I'll go on to the hot dog race in Mission Heights, and it was the first ever hot dog run. We walked five kilometers. I did it in fifty-seven minutes, carrying grandchildren and stuff, so that's pretty good. But I know the Mission Heights Neighborhood Association was able to create a little bit of fundraising for their group, so I participated on behalf of a former councillor, Dan Wong, who sent me the invitation personally, so, good things.
Thanks, councillor O'Toole. Councillor Rice?
I had the honour of emceeing the parks naming ceremony, the first twenty-five parks that has, councillor O'Toole said, a very emotional evening and certainly one of the nicest evenings I've attended. Attended the going away of Randy Poole, who began at our GPROM services twenty-five years ago, is now moving down to Lethbridge. I opened three tenders. I attended the changeover announcement today where Free FM became one oh four point seven, two-day FM, and a new format, so that was interesting. I attended the Alberta Recycling Management Authority Strategic Planning, and I just want to pass on to council that since the mid nineteen nineties, actually twenty years, Albertans have diverted the following materials from landfill, twenty-two billion beverage containers, one point two five billion litres of used oil, a hundred and seven million oil filters, eighty-two million tyres, twenty-six million kilograms of plastic oil containers, thirteen million litres of paint, six million computers and TVs, and two million spray paint cans. Without the recycling efforts, this would be in our landfills, and we'd be looking to build new ones, which would be atrociously expensive. I know that this is our last council meeting till August eleventh, but you are going to be busy, trust me on that one. You have coming up on July twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, a hundred years of transportation. Councillor O'Toole has been working night and day on getting all sorts of vintage equipment. It'll be on one hundred and first street from one hundred and second avenue down to Ninety-Ninth Avenue, so you'll want to take that in during the day. On Thursday, July thirty-first is the book launch, Grand Prairie's new book launch at the seniors' tea, so again, you know, put your sport coat on and go have a cup of tea, and that's, the author will be there as well. Friday, August the first is the Chamber of Commerce Homecoming Mixer, and then, of course, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, down in the park, and councillor Thiessen has been an enthusiastic addition to that committee. We have a rather unique opportunity in that Loaves Bakery, which is, sells at the farmer's market Friday and Saturday night, has received permission from the Hundredth Anniversary Committee. They will be authorized, they have been authorized to use the Hundredth Anniversary logo on their bread during twenty-fourteen in accordance with the city's brand style guide. So you will be able to go and buy a loaf of bread with the Hundredth Anniversary logo stamped on it. I like that one quite a bit. And the, there's still very many events from the Hundredth Anniversary to take place, and don't forget, this weekend is the street performers here in Grand Prairie. That's it.
Councillor Rice? Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. Sorry, I had some trouble with the button there. Maybe I'm going cold-blooded or something. You know, it was actually quite a slow two weeks since the last council meeting for this guy. I only attended ten meetings that weren't related to council business, that were, well, they're all related to council business, but anyways, I'd just like to highlight a couple, but the first foremost, June thirtieth, July first, I was fortunate enough to be asked to do some emcee work down at Musca Cepi Park for the Canada Day festivities. I know councillor Radburn wasn't here, so obviously he missed out on my three-piece red suit for Canada Day, but I did dance up and down the street handing out candy in the parade, which, by the way, was a fantastic parade, if anyone wants to take a look at the parade and hasn't yet done so. It is available online for, for people at home. And then, as well, I attended the July second naming of the parks, and that was an emotional day. I think the greatest emotion that I got from that day was when councillor Kevin O'Toole and myself tag-team hugged councillor Rice when it was all said and done, put in probably the biggest smile on her face. Not to mention how many people and really truly great people that were, have been builders in our community that were there that we honored in the naming of the park. Finishing off, of course, with the naming of Ernie Radburn Pavilion, it was great seeing families come out in masses to support the people and their family had done so well. I also attended Stephen Hinckley, and before I leave, I'm gonna cut this up because I see the mayor's yawn over there, I'm just going to throw it out that, yes, the Hundredth Anniversary Homecoming Spectacular, I'm not gonna get another chance to say it here, but please come on down, August first, second, and third, down at Musca Cepi Park. It's a free event. Each day, we're giving away food, community barbecue on the Friday, pancake breakfast on the Saturday, and cutting of the cake, plus a fireworks display that is going to put Canada Days to shame, according to people down at Musca Cepi Park. We also have a very big announcement on Wednesday that I hope everyone tunes in to their newspapers and radio stations to hear that, as we're gonna be announcing our headline performer for the Sunday evening of the Homecoming Spectacular down at Musca Cepi Park on Sunday, August third. Thank you.
Councillor Thiessen? And my yawn was not a comment on the interest of your comments. It's on the length of the day. Councillor Logan?
Thank you. You're not even going to give us any initials on the entertainer. I spent about a week and a half of the last couple of weeks down in central Alberta, and I actually have something to say about central Alberta, but first of all, I'm going to say the park naming, wonderful event. Congratulations to all of the people that worked on it and emceed it, and myself and my two brothers were incredibly honored and privileged to see our dad have his name put on one of those parks, so this is going to be exciting to go forward with and, and see more of those. While I was down in central Alberta, I took advantage of reading some of the Camrose newspapers, and I found to my, not sure whether it's fright or delight, that the same sorts of issues that we have up here with, as an urban entity with rural neighbors and trying to work out things that make sense for all of our populations are burning hot in the Camrose area. The newspaper has taken really strong positions against the rural area. They seem to be sort of back maybe ten years from where we are now, and given the, how slow these things go, that ten years is, may not mark a lot. But obviously, this is incredibly important across the province, and perhaps we'll finally get some more of a rationalized system in place for rural-urban relations. The one thing I did hear about as I was away was the motion that defeated the pool in Musca Cepi Park, and I regarded that with great sadness at one point and with horror at another point that this would happen, and I certainly hope we'll find a way to put that back on the table. It's an incredible jewel. I talked to a number of people across the province, again, with parks, and they'd give their left arms to have something like that, and we can't just throw it away. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Logan. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I attended a few events as well. June thirtieth, I attended the fireworks in the park where councillor Thiessen was there making it go on really well. We had a fireworks show that I have to say was amazing. They practiced for like, one day a week for like a couple of months, and if you were there, you knew what it was all about, and it was truly amazing. And they announced that the fireworks would be twelve minutes, and they lasted twenty-seven minutes. So congrats on the city and everybody that I've talked to and ran into commented how well they were run and how long they lasted. As well as July first, Canada Day Parade, which I, unless I'm not in the city, I want to attend, it's my favorite holiday, and we're all Canadian and I'm very proud of it. Thanks to Jody Clausen, once again, working very hard with her and her daughter, and it wasn't her fault that we ran out of candy. It was such a hot day, and we had so many children, and we also had young kids from the float behind in the Grand Prairie Museum helping us, that we actually used up all their Canada flags and Canada pins. So next year, I think the budget, and I'm not one for increasing budgets, Mayor Given, but I am for in the candy, we might, instead of ten thousand pieces, have fifteen thousand or something. So another night, I was able, this Friday, July eleventh, to attend with my children and family to the Sumba, you might have heard, the first event, and councillor O'Toole was there speaking on behalf of the mayor and council, and I was shocked that they raised ten thousand dollars. There was three over, for QE two, there was over three hundred participants, and I went on the walk with them and was quite proud. Another event I wanted to say is, and I usually don't in some of these, but is, the Free FM changed it to two-day to one oh four point seven. I got there a little late because I had my children before I could, I was not gonna, I was gonna say pawn off, but give them to their mother. Anyways, so I've always incredibly loved to deal with one oh four point seven, incredibly good for customer relations and for, you know, pay us in a month and here's the bill, just like CJXX, and Grant has moved there from CJXX, so they got like double opportunities to move them forward, so, and I've listened to the station already, fresh and bold, and they're there for the, the station's for youth, and they're gonna, they're gonna do very, very well. The one I regret missing was name of the parks, but as councillor Logan and councillor Radburn, their fathers were named, but I've heard, I've met councillor Radburn's dad, I never got to meet councillor Logan's, but I've heard so many good things about him, many, many good things. It's not a surprise that names were part of the plan. And the other one was, I had a former councillor, Crokin, come up to me, thank you, behalf of the city, and he was pretty emotional, and he was very proud of it. So for his family, which have a strong tradition in the family, and his mom's almost a hundred, Jane Crokin. And the other one, I want to say, it's not just the street performers this weekend, we got the East Coast Garden Party, I'm very proud of this, and the other thing is, they had it in Fort Murray this, just this weekend, and they had lineups of hundreds and hundreds of people to get into the event, so, thank you very much.
Councillor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. As council is well aware, I've been away, so I just want to do one thing tonight. Unfortunately, I was not at naming the parks ceremony and the naming of Ernie Radburn Pavilion. So on behalf of my, personally, and as a representative of the family, I want to say three things. First of all, I want to thank Helen for her thoughtfulness in suggesting dad's name, and thanks council for their support. Bottom of my heart, I appreciate it. Our family is extremely proud of our dad's involvement in the development of the park and his love for the park and what it offers all city residents, and I know that if he were still here today, he would be honored and pleased. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Radburn. I have a few items that I could cover, but I think, given that heartfelt thanks, I think we'll let councillor Radburn have the last word tonight. We'll call our meeting adjourned. Thank you.